Okay. First, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I will tell you how the hearing is going to proceed. First, I'll give you a notification. This hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law and broadcast over Lunenburg Public Access. I'd like to introduce you to the board members. To my left is Lisa Armendin, the board secretary. I'm Alfred Grevell. This is Hans Winthrop, David Blatt, and Patrick Callahan. The way the meeting will proceed is Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submissions of additional documents. You will please come forward to the mic and give your name and address. Board members will have the opportunity to ask questions that they may have while the applicant is at the mic. There will be a public comment period. You will please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and please address all comments and questions to the board. This is a, the first hearing is for a special permit, and there are required findings for any special permit. They are that it will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic, flow, congestion, danger, fire, explosion, or other reasons; that it will not have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood; that it will be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if in open use; and that it will not produce noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property. And with that, I would ask Lisa to please read the application.
This is an application for a special permit, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant is Lunenburg Auto Center, Inc., 36 Summer Street in Lunenburg. They hereby makes application as follows: to operate and auto repair and used auto sales at 36 Summer Street. The auto repair did like 17 cars, auto sales 53 cars, and employees will be six cars. Proposed action has begun. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, Section 4, 1, L1. The street address of the property is 36 Summer Street in Lunenburg. Assessors map 115, parcel 8. Name and address of each holder of legal title to the land which is the subject of this case is Peter M. Kelly, LLC, 36 Summer Street in Lunenburg. The deed is recorded in Worcester Northern District Registry of Deeds, Book 7171, Page 353, and recorded May 7, 2010. If the undersigned has any knowledge of a prior appeal, application, or petition concerning the land or building involved in this case, describe the case and the dates involved. May 12, there was a special permit granted for auto sales and auto repair. The special permit questions and answers are as follows. A) Will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons? The reply, "The majority of the work will be performed inside the existing garage bays and away from the public. There is ample room on the lot to allow for cars and delivery trucks to enter without affecting traffic on Summer Street. There is also ample room when exiting the lot to see in both directions to avoid traffic problems. The work being performed should not have any fire and/or explosion hazards stemming from it." B) Will this action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood? The reply, "The surrounding pieces of property are mostly commercial. Therefore, I do not see any adverse material effects on the local community." C) Will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if in open use? The reply, "All storage of materials and parts will be inside the building to limit any unsightliness to the general public. Also, most of the repair work will be performed inside the service bays to further limit the impact to the public." D) Will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? And the reply, "The majority of the work will be done inside the service bays. There should be very little, if any, noise, dust, vibration, smoke, odor, heat, or glare produced by the work performed at this location. Only minor diagnostic tests and road tests will be performed outside in the view of the general public." And that is signed on November 7, 2019, by Luciano Brito de Cruz of 179 Wilder Street, Apartment 104 in Leamont, Mass., also known as Lunenburg Auto Center. There is a property map showing the pave, the parking and where all the cars will be located, and there is a site map. And also, a letter from Peter M. Kelly of 36 Summer Street. Peter M. Kelly, LLC of 36 Summer Street, Lunenburg, Mass., who is the property and land owner of 36 Summer Street Lunenburg hereby authorize and permit Luciano Brito de la Cruz, Lunenburg Auto Center, 36 Summer Street, Lunenburg, Mass., to apply for a special permit through the town of Lunenburg for the proposed use at the abut location. And that's signed Peter M. Kelly on November 7, 2019. There is also a list of abuttes attached to the application with a field card from the assessors' office. There was also one board that made a notation through our online system, and that was from the planning board, Land Use Director Adam Burney, and his notation was, "If the special permit is approved, the applicant will need to obtain a site plan review from the planning board. Due to the nature of the request, it would be helpful to review a plan of the property including proposed parking areas, vehicle storage areas, any expansion of the parking area, and the pertinent facilities." And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
And with that, I would invite the applicant to come to the mic and speak to the application if you would like.
Uh, me and my brother, we are...
You have to come up to the mic, give your name and address, and say whatever you would like.
Thank you. This is Anderson and Luciano de Cruz. We applying for a, the license there. Peter already has a license in place, and he will turn that down once, if everything goes granted to us. And we, you know, we're excited to come to Lunenburg and be a part of this community. I currently live in Sterling, Massachusetts. I'm in a business, I'm a master mechanic. I'm in a business for over 20 years, me and my brother. And, you know, when we started with Peter, we started under him, and he's like, you know, I, it's time for you guys to go on your own. He got the trust and saw that we are honest people and people that, you know, we care about the community and Lunenburg and its amazing community, and we are, you know, proud to be doing business over here.
Okay. Thank you. One question. It said that the, the has begun, that you've already been doing business there. How long have you been there?
Well, we're doing business as a, we're just then doing some repair in there in the past under, under Peter because he was renting us, and we were, we was working for him technically.
Oh, okay.
So, yes, I was working for him in the past year and a half.
Okay.
So...
So, the reason you're here tonight is because now Mr. Kelly rented out the garage bays to an outside vendor, which is yourselves?
Yes, yes.
And that requires you to come before the zoning board for approval for, and get the current conditions in the, the outline of the special permit. Okay.
Any questions?
And with that, I'll open it up to the board if they have questions.
Mr. Chair, I, I'm just trying to understand. I know they're looking for 53 used car spaces.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just wondering what the permit is there tonight, today?
The, I look back, the, the permit in, I think it was 2013. And actually, the layout that they gave us in, in the new packet is the same exact layout that's right here, but it's the same layout that was in the 2013. As far as, it's, it's an exact copy.
Okay.
Counselor Davis, yeah, we are, we didn't need that much, but everything was in place. And, you know, so when that to be make easy for us, Peter said, you know, I just let's, and he talked to someone in town, and they said, "No, let's just keep the way it is. That way it'll be easier for you guys and for us."
Okay. So, there, with, with the auto sales, the auto repairs, and employees, it's really a total of 76?
Yes. There is, there is plenty of space for even more than that, but we want to leave, you know, in front of the two bays, space for deliveries, trucks come, if, if any comes, to churn and, as we said, not affect anything on the, the traffic area.
Where, where do you get your cars from, the cars for sale?
Well, we don't have cars for sale yet. Well, let me rephrase that. Today, we put three cars up there, there's signs on for sale, but we are trying something. We're trying to, you know, we have customers like DeU North, JR, and Lampster, Guido Service in Lampster. So, the cars that I'm servicing right now, like I got a black Mercedes from Joyce Smalling from DeU. So, what I did to try, you know, in the competition, every car that I'm servicing, I'm gonna do a quick detail, wash outside and inside. So, I demonstrate to the dealer, I put three cars there, took pictures today to demonstrate to them how the car will, if they come to service with me, how the car is gonna get out of the place. So, there's three cars there, it's not for sale, and we're not getting any cars, but when we got the license, we're gonna get our cars for sale out of the auctions.
Okay. So, you're gonna go to the auction?
Yes.
Okay. So, are these all gonna be newer cars, a variety of cars?
Well, it'll be a variety, but we don't, you know, we don't want to deal with too much used because, you know, in the past, we didn't have very success with the, you know, we want to get a, you know, a car, it's too affordable for everyone. We're gonna work with banks, they're gonna be lending, but we don't want to, we're not gonna be working just with top-of-line cars, you know. We're gonna have cars varying for prices.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
I just have one question.
Sure.
Do you guys have any plans on, like, signage, or is it just gonna kind of keep what's there and...
Well, the signage, there is a small sign there that says PMK. So, once everything goes through, we're gonna change that sign, but it's the same.
Take the same one and put your name on it?
Yeah, just the face, which is gonna read Lunenburg Auto Sales.
Fair enough. Okay.
Okay. And the repairs, that's just gonna be your own?
Well, we're gonna...
Public plus...
Well, we, well, the thing is, we, you know, it's a start, it's a business that we started, and we're gonna try to get new customers, you know. Mostly, we'll be our own repair, but we want to be able to repair a car for, for the public as well, you know. There's a lot of, there's a lot of, you know, people near to us, there's a lot of people that needs, you know, good work, honest people working on their cars. Is this gonna be a majority of our business? No, not at all, but we're gonna be, want to be open for it if it comes to us.
Okay. And there'll be, there'll be no painting or anything like...
No, no, not at all. No.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I just, I, I just was curious about the, the used car spaces, the number, but I guess you, you answered that with, that that was in the same previous application. What are the hours of operation?
Well, as of right now, we are eight to six because we're trying to, as you guys know, you're business people here, it's like, at the beginning, we have to stretch as much hours as we can, you know, because we don't have the customer, the basic, the customer basics that we need to go from nine to five or nine to four. So, that's, the plan is to get to a point that'll be nine to four. But as of right now, we're there at this time.
And is that Monday through Saturday?
Friday. Saturday, what we do on Saturday, we just clean the yards, we, if it's any cars, it's left from the week, we finish that, and, you know, just stuff like that.
No Sundays, then?
No.
Okay.
So, any, any thoughts about earlier, so if I, you know, drop a car off before work or something like that?
Well, we have, we have a, a drop off, yeah, through the door. We can leave the cars. That's why we don't leave anything in front of the two bays because if, you know, and sometimes, you know, I've been driving down the roads, and I need to turn the directions, and it's, I'm so, you know, I'm so glad when I find a place that I can turn, so that way we put two flags, very visible, and it's open. If anyone want to change the direction, it won't be anything in the way for them.
Okay. I'm all set.
All set? Everybody?
Yes.
Okay. With that, then, I will ask for a motion. And I will point out that this, to board tonight is only four members. Normally, we have five, but you will need four out of four.
Okay.
With that, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the special permit for the auto sales, used auto sales and auto repair, 36 Summer Street.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Oh, you want to do public comment?
Ah, that's right. I gotta do public comment. It's been a while. Would anybody from the public like to speak about the petition? Hearing none, we'll cut off public discussion. I will, you know, after you've had a motion and a second, I will go through a list of conditions, because I'm not sure if you're familiar with these conditions. They are on the original.
Mm-hmm.
And they are for the car lots in town.
Absolutely.
Which will be conditioned on your, on the permit. That number one, there'll be no floor drains in the repair area in the garage. All hazardous materials that defined by the Department of Environmental Protection in accordance with 310 CMR 4000, the materials shall be handled, stored, and disposed of in accordance with the aforementioned regulations. The cars must be placed not less than 20 feet from the street. All loading and unloading of vehicles is to be done off-street for safety purposes. No parts, materials, or tools shall be displayed or stored out of doors. No junk, as that term is herein after defined, shall be stored or maintained out of doors. As used herein, the term junk shall mean any workout, cast-off, or discarded articles or material which are already for destruction or which have been collected to store for salvage or conversion to some use. The business hours for sale of the new car, I think we went through that, it's eight to six. So, that will be in there. The petition...
Did we just say the Saturday hours? We didn't really know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should.
We're gonna put Saturday hours in as well. We'll leave it the same.
Eight to noon, maybe?
Well, you can have the same hours.
We'll leave the same hours.
Oh, you can? Yeah. All right. Well, yeah, that's fine. I just don't want to put that and that anyway out there.
It gives you the leeway if you grow your business and you need the Saturdays.
It's there.
Oh, okay. Oh, thank you, thank you.
The petitioner shall conduct the business at all times in a manner so as not to be offensive to the residential abuttes, and like you say, it's mainly commercial, so we're okay. The granting of this special authorization shall ensure to the benefit of the applicant and shall cease in the event the business is sold or sublet to another party. The permit will be subject to periodic review by the Board of Zoning Enforcement Officer. If restrictions noted as part of this granting of this permit are not adhered to or if operating in any way offensive or detrimental to the neighborhood, this board would ask the enforcement officer to begin the procedure to rescind this permit. The petitioner shall abide by all requirements of the Department of Public Works in the Town of Lunenburg in the State of Massachusetts with respect to ingress and egress at the property. The petitioners must comply with the Town of Lunenburg bylaw regarding signage and any lighting shall not be offensive to abutting properties. Those will be conditions in this.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. I'll ask for a vote.
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
So, it is granted. We wish you good luck with your new thing.
Do you have to read? I'm sorry, sir.
I do have one more thing to read.
Sure.
That's why we have him.
I know, right? Keep him on his toes.
Okay. This, the special permit is granted with contingency that the petitioner comply with all licenses, regulations, statutes, in order to any and all applicable local, state, and federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to a periodic review by the permit granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions. Noncompliance to such conditions may result in revocation of the permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court within 20 days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk that 20 days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded in the registry of deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded. This special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use or construction is commenced. With that, we wish you luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
The paper, we can come again later, right? Or that, or...
We can talk tomorrow.
All right.
Okay. You're welcome.
Yep. Thank you.
You're all set?
All set.
Good night.
Yeah, we got 10 minutes before the next hearing.
Perfect. I'll do as much as I can.
All right. I still gotta do it. Okay, again, welcome to the Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals. Again, I will go over the procedure. Again, I'll give the notification that the hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access. I will introduce the board members again. To my left is Lisa Armendon, the Board Secretary, Alfred Gravel, this is Hans Winthrop, David Blatt, and Patrick Callahan. The way that the hearing will go, this is a little bit different in that this is a case as a person agreed by the building commissioner's decision. And so that what I will do is I will have the...Lisa will read the petition as submitted in any other submitted communications. And I will call the building inspector first, so we understand what his position was, and then we'll have the applicant, we'll have the opportunity for comments and our applications on the petition. So again, everybody would please come forward to the mic, give your name and address. Board members will have the opportunity to ask questions while they are at the mic. And again, there will be a public comment, period. And with that, I would ask Lisa to please read the petition. I will go through one more thing. Again, there are only four members here, so you would need four out of four. The other thing is, one of the members, David Blatt, has to go to the airport tonight. He has to leave by 8:30, so I just want to know that if we're going to go beyond that, we may have to continue. And with that, I would ask Lisa to please read the application.
This is an application for an appeal from a person aggrieved Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48, Section 8, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant is Marilyn Sue Jewell and Perry Jewell of 20 Sunset Lane in Lunenburg. The undersigned hereby appeals as follows. The undersigned Sue and Perry Jewell, residents of 20 Sunset Lane, Lunenburg, hereby appeal the October 10, 2009 decision of the Building Commissioner's zoning officer for the town of Lunenburg, Mr. Casey Burlingame, the Commissioner. The Commissioner's decision, see Addendum Exhibit Number Two, notify the Jewells through their counsel that no enforcement action would be taken with respect to a certain seven-foot stockade fence, which was caused to be erected honor about October 8, 2019 by the owners of 30 Sunset Lane, Carl and Phyllis Luck, as they are trustees of the Luck Family Trust. The fence sits upon 30 Sunset Lane parcel and directly borders the Jewells' exclusive driveway easement, which was conveyed to the Jewells by the Luxe honor about October 11, 2017, by way of an exclusive driveway easement deed and agreement recorded with the Western Northern District Registry of Deeds honor about October 12, 2019, at Book 8933, page 66. See Addendum Exhibit Number Three. The easement was conveyed as part of a settlement agreement relating to a lawsuit filed against the Jewells by the Luxe in the Massachusetts Land Court in 2016. The Jewells specifically appealed the Commissioner's decision not to enforce the zoning bylaw for the town of Lunenburg, particularly Chapter 250, 6.601, pursuant to which the fence should be reduced in height to no more than 36 inches as described, as further described herein. An application for the same dated October 10, 2019, was submitted to the building inspector and was denied by the same for the reasons stated in the letter attached here, too. If a building or use permit was applied for, a copy shall be attached to each copy of this form. Sue Jewell visited the office of the building inspector to verbally request the inspection of the fence honor about October 9, 2019, and the Jewells' counsel left voicemails for the building inspector inquiring about inspection as well. Honor about October 10, 2019, the Commissioner inspected the fence and contacted the Jewells' counsel to convey his findings verbally. The Commissioner invited the Jewells' counsel to request a written decision, which he did, see Addendum Exhibit Number Four. Has the proposed action begun? The answer is yes, the fence has been erected, see photographs at Addendum Exhibit Number Five. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw. Not applicable, this is an appeal pursuant to zoning bylaw Chapter 250, 8.3b1, and Mass. General Law Chapter 48, Section 8. The basis for this appeal or petition for variance concerns the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw. A, Chapter 250, 8.3b1 of the bylaw, which empowers the Zoning Board of Appeals to, in pertinent part, hear and decide appeals in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 48, Section 8, as amended from any person aggrieved by reason of his inability to obtain a permit or enforcement action from the administrative officer or board in the town. B, Chapter 250, 6.601 of bylaw, which reads, "In pertinent part, boundary fences, walls, or hedges shall be permitted, provided that they do not exceed six feet in height, and provided that no fence which obstructs vision shall exceed 36 inches in height within 20 feet of the street line or within 12 horizontal feet of habitable rooms in an abutting dwelling." The street address or sufficient description to adequately identify the land of building which is the subject of this case is 30 Sunset Lane in Lunenburg, Massachusetts. See assesses map printouts at Addendum Exhibit Number Six, which identify 30 Sunset Lane as parcel number 19. The name and address of each holder of legal title to the land which is the subject of this case is Carl A. Luck and Phyllis M. Luck, trustees of the Luck Family Trust. As trustees of the Luck Family Trust, the Luxe own both 30 Sunset Lane, the property which is the subject of this appeal, and 50 Sunset Lane. The Luxe reside at 50 Sunset Lane and rent the residence at 30 Sunset Lane to renters. The deed is recorded in Western Northern District Registry of Deeds, Book 8837, page 10, and recorded May 19, 2019. They have no knowledge of a prior appeal, application, or petition concerning the land or building involved in this case. Draw to appropriate scale or sketch or diagram of the land or buildings which are the subject of this case. Include the information listed under Section 1D of the instructions attached to this application. See Exhibit Number Seven, easement plan of land dated July 31, 2017, prepared and certified by Whitman &amp; Bingham Associates, Inc. Exhibit Number Eight, plan of land dated May 29, 2002, prepared and certified by Whitman &amp; Bingham Associates. And Exhibit Number Seventeen, sketch of fence over July 31, 2018, easement plan of land. The following additional information is provided because it is considered important to this case. Exhibit Number One, which presents arguments in support of this appeal. B, all addendum exhibits which are cited either in the application responses, in the arguments supporting the appeals set forth in Exhibit Number One, or required by the instructions. Exhibit Numbers 12 through 15, which comprise deed and title information, not cited herein, but included in the event that they may be helpful during the hearing in this matter. And this is dated the 7th day of November of 2019, and it's signed by both Perry and Marilyn Jewell and Jess D. Oyer of One Beacon Street, 21, 21st floor, Boston, Mass. The chairman asked that I not read all the exhibits, but I will read the building commissioner's interpretation. This is dated October 10, 2019, to Murphy &amp; King Law, here of Jess D. Oyer, regarding fence determination for 30 Sunset Lane. Dear Mr. Oyer, you have inquired to this office as to whether or not the fence installed at 30 Sunset Lane, abutting 20 Sunset Lane, meets the Lunenburg zoning bylaw. It is my opinion as the building commissioner's zoning officer that it does. Specific concerns conveyed were height allowed and the obstruction of vision. Per Section 250, 6.6, Performance Standards Zero, Number One, only boundary fences within 20 feet of the street line or within 12 horizontal feet of habitable rooms in an abutting dwelling must be reduced in height from the allowable six feet down to 36 inches. In review of our bylaws, the definition of street line, which directs to exterior line, does not apply to the easement alongside the fence, as it is not a street or public way. Therefore, the fence is not required to be reduced in height. The allowable six-foot height, Section 250, 6.601, is intended to be met by Mr. and Mrs. Carl Luck once the final grading has been performed per my discussion with them today, 10/10/2019. Please be advised, if you or any party is aggrieved by this determination, you have the right to appeal under Section 250, 8.3b1 of our zoning bylaw. And that's signed by Casey Burlingame. Do you want me to?
Let me ask the Jewells. Everybody seems to be here. So we have the Jewells, we have the Luxe and the building commissioners. What we're asking is, there's a lot of information, a lot of exhibits, there's a lot of documents that have been turned in. Is there anything that you would like us to read into the public record right now? What we were looking at and debating is the actual specifications of the alleged error, the convention's interpretation of the zoning bylaw as related to the case.
I think probably, yes, you can correct me, but I think if you would allow Jess maybe to address some of that as opposed to reading it, I think it might be more expedient.
Okay, that's kind of what I thought.
Do you feel that there's something that needs to be read?
Well, I assume that the document itself will be made part of the board's record, and hopefully those republicans won't be read aloud to...
Right, it will definitely be part of the...
So, in addition to that, I have sort of an abbreviated version that I'm trying to present to the board if that is necessary.
Okay, thank you.
I did receive two letters via email. The first one I received December 4, 2019, to whom it may concern, "With regard to the newly-installed fence at 30 Sunset Lane property, we do not feel that there is any safety concern in regard to visibility and traffic in the 14-foot and 16-foot rights-of-way. We have used the property for additional parking for guests several times over the years. We are unable to attend due to schedule work conflicts." And that is signed by Cody and Lizzie Gagliardi. And then on December 9, "Dear Zoning Board of Appeals, we, Sheila and Carrie Plantter, will not be able to attend the hearing Wednesday, December 11, 2019, meeting regarding the Luxe new stockade fence near the property line between 30 Sunset Lane and the driveway of the Jewells' 20 Sunset Lane, but wish you to have our viewpoint. It does obstruct visibility as we and others come and go to our home at 22 Sunset Lane. As we leave our home towards Sunset Lane, the end of the fence nearest the 16-foot right-of-way, Fire Road 27, obstructs our view of anyone coming from the Jewells driveway, usually backing out. Similarly, when returning to our home, the end of the fence nearest the 14-foot right-of-way obstructs our view of anyone coming out of the Jewells driveway. Also, the overall fence height throughout does not allow visibility of any activity on the driveway approaching the rights-of-ways. There are also oil trucks, septic pumping trucks, other maintenance people, and an increasing number of delivery trucks, especially to Number 30 Sunset Lane, all of which must turn around to exit back out Sunset Lane in this area. Winter plowing of both these right-of-ways, as recently experienced by Mr. Jewell and Carrie, proved increasingly difficult with a less maneuverable plow truck and now restricted visibility. Carrie and Mr. Jewell provide all the plowing, sanding, and salting of the hill on Fire Road 27 for all who access Sunset Lane on these rights-of-ways, including Number 20, 22, and 30 Sunset Lane. The fence height needs to be reduced to where it can be seen over it or needs to be removed." And that is signed by Sheila Plantter and Carrie Plantter. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Did you want something right into the record?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, please. There are two letters we sent to the ZBA. The December 3rd and one on the December 4th. I appreciate those.
Do you have those, Lisa?
December 3, 2019. Dear ZBA members, we are pleased to provide the communication and documentation in support of the building commissioner's decision on the subject fence, property fence. Specifically herein, we provide backup information regarding the communications with both the Jewells' attorney and the building commissioner regarding the original plan to bring the fence into compliance with the six-foot height criteria of the regulations after final grading. First and foremost, it has been our clear objective from the beginning of the planning stage to construct a fence on our property that was fully compliant with all the Lunenburg regulations for fences. One key step in the process before construction was to meet with Gary Rhodes, the then-building commissioner. At that meeting, after a review of the plan and regulation, Gary told us that the fence could not be over six feet tall without a waiver. He also informs us that since the right-of-ways are not streets, there would be no setback limitation on height. Finally, that since it was over 12 feet from the nearest habitable dwelling, there were no restrictions on height due to that. He provided us a copy of the relevant regulation. We have used that guide for the design and installation. When the Jewells' driveway installation and work on the 16-foot right-of-way was complete, including landscaping, it is a fact that they had raised the grade of the property all along the easement boundary line and 16-foot right-of-way by 6 to 18 inches. This created a bowl and contributed to stormwater issues on the other side of the easement boundary and inside the 16-foot right-of-way, i.e. the triangle. As a result, it was determined that the triangle grade needs to be brought up to or close to the grade created by the Jewells' work. A planned-finished grade has been laid out with several strings across the property, but as of today, it is under the snow and is less than six inches in most of the area. The intention to loom and cede this area for future root use, such as lawn games, as this is the only relatively level area available to the residents of 30 Sunset Lane rental property and/or 50 Sunset Lane, our home. Due to scheduling reasons, it was necessary to install the fence before getting the landscaping grading done. The fence was therefore installed such that the bottom of the fence would be precisely at or at below the new grade. Unfortunately, on the day the fence was installed, the Jewells contacted their lawyer, and he left both Phyllis and I voicemails at roughly 10:30 on October 8, the day the installation was in process. For the record, that same day, Sue Jewell filed a report with the police who visited the site. The police officers saw no issues. Mr. Oyer's messages essentially informed us that if we did not stop the installation, that we would be taken to court to have the fence removed and damages sought. As I was on-site all day and Phyllis was at a meeting of the Central Mass Regional Stormwater Coalition at the Western Office of Mass DEP, we did not pick up voicemails until the fence installation was completed mid-afternoon. When we promptly sent an email, see attached email from Carl Luck to Jess Oyer at 3:16 p.m. on October 8, which clarified the situation and that we would complete the work grading once we heard from them that the survey work which they questioned was resolved. The next communication was 10 days later, when we were served with notice of being sued by the Jewells in Superior Court. The objectives of this suit were to have the fence removed and seek significant monetary damages. Although we had arranged with the contractor to have the site work landscaping done right away, due to the pending lawsuit in Superior Court, we were advised by our counsel not to do any more work on the property for fear of new court actions by the Jewells. We again stated our intention in detail to the Jewells' attorney in our affirmative defense, item 26 is below. Twenty-six. Defendants state that the stockade fence was constructed so that it would be installed, repaired, and/or replaced from 30 Sunset Lane without the need to enter on the plaintiff's easement. Defendants further state that the stockade fence was constructed so that it would be six feet in height upon completion of the installation work. Defendants received approval from the Lunenburg Building Inspector to backfill the land at the base of the fence in order to bring the grade up to the level, the plaintiff's easement, following the installation of the plaintiff's driveway. Defendants have refrained from backfilling the land at the base of the fence due to the filing of this lawsuit and the allegedly disputed boundary of the easement. Defendants stand ready, willing and able to backfill the land at the base of the fence. Defendants deny the remaining allegations in Paragraph 26. On the day of the fence installation, we contacted the town's new building inspector, Casey Burlingame, who, as it turned out, had already been contacted by the Jewells. Casey Burlingame, who, as it turned out, had already been contacted by the Jewels. After a review and a site visit, Mr. Burlingame came to the same conclusion as the prior building commissioner's interpretation of the regulations regarding the now-constructed fence. After the current building commissioner visited the site, we discussed the height of the fence, specifically the space from the bottom of the fence to the ground. He agreed that as long as we brought the ground level up to within a couple of inches of the bottom of the fence, it would be in full compliance with all regulations, including any view of height requirements at the right-of-ways, 14 feet and 16 feet. He did ask us to document our commitment to bring the fence into compliance by raising the grade appropriately, which we did immediately, see attached email from Carl Luck to Mr. Burlingame on October 10. We feel it would be unreasonable for the ZBA to rule that we are not allowed to grade after the fence installation. If we had done the grading first, as preferred by us, then installed the fence, there would have been no issues with either grading or fence installation, and the result would have been the same. If the ZBA rules in our favor of the Jewels on this matter, we see nothing that would stop us from removing the fence sections, doing the grading, and then reinstalling the fence. None of this would require a permit or waiver and would be allowed by right. If we are mistaken in this belief, we would appreciate knowing it. For these reasons, we feel the ZBA should support the building commissioner's decision that the height of the fence relative to grade complies with the regulations, based on the understanding and commitment from us that the grade will be brought up to a level that will meet the six-foot height requirement. Sincerely, Phyllis and Carl Luck, residents of 15 Sunset Lane and owners of 30 Sunset Lane in Lunenburg. And the other one, was that the email dated October 10?
December 4.
December 4. Yes, it's easier to give to me. To zoning board of appeals from Carl and Phyllis Luck, support for a building commissioner decision regarding 30 Sunset fence and right-of-ways. Dear ZBA members, we provide this input to the ZBA specifically to address and support the building commissioner's decision that the right-of-ways are not streets, or specifically they do not define "street lines" or "as defined in the regulations, exterior lines" for the purpose of fence installation regulations and compliance. It is important to note that both the prior and current building commissioners told us that there were no setback requirements from the fence, for the fence, from either of the right-of-ways, as they are not streets. Therefore, there is no "street line" otherwise defined as "exterior line." The fact that we did provide some setback in height reduction was purely an attempt by us to go no further than we needed to, in order for the fence to provide the desired privacy and enjoyment of use for this portion of the 30 Sunset Lane lot. This is evidenced by the fence being set back eight feet at the 16-foot right-of-way and stepping down to four feet at the 14-foot right-of-way. The Jewels' appeal is asking the ZBA to rule that not only right-of-ways, but also driveway easements are technically streets. If you drive around Lake Shirley, as I have, as well as most other parts of Lunenburg, we assure you too would realize that if this interpretation were to be established by the ZBA in a ruling here, that there would be many fences in Lunenburg that would be in violation of the zoning bylaws of Lunenburg. In addition, if all driveways, easement, right-of-ways, essentially all ways must comply with all regulations that reference streets, what other significant unintended consequences would result in existing and future development? As a technical matter, we question if there even is an exterior line related to the 14-foot right-of-way. The Jewels' driveway easement does terminate on one end at the 14-foot right-of-way, which right-of-way is entirely on the 30 Sunset Lane property, so is not exterior to the property. This right-of-way has been essentially a shared driveway for deed use by Lot B, now 20 and 22 Sunset Lane, since 1947. It is of particular note and relevance that the Jewels have used this right-of-way for roughly 50 years. For over 30 years, there has been a 16-foot-high stockade fence along the entire length and within a couple of feet of the 14-foot right-of-way. This stockade fence goes to the intersection of the 16-foot right-of-way and then down the length of the 16-foot right-of-way to the right. The fence is virtually on the border of the right-of-way and goes right up to the intersection point. According to the Jewels' argument, this intersection should be an issue for all four of the deed users of the 14 and 16-foot right-of-way, that being 20, 22, 30, and 50 Sunset Lane. Not once in the 15 years that we have owned 30 Sunset Lane and lived at the end of the 16-foot right-of-way at 50 Sunset Lane have the Jewels or the residents, guests of 20, 22, 30, or 50 Sunset Lane identified any issues with this fence regarding setbacks of safety, even though it is much closer to the right-of-way and intersection than the subject new privacy fence. The current residents of 30 Sunset Lane, who have lived there for three and a half years, have provided a letter to the ZBA specifically stating that they do not feel there are any safety issues with these ways. Both the 14-foot and 16-foot right-of-ways have been repeatedly used by the Jewels, their friends and relatives, for snowmobile and all-terrain vehicle use as recently as this week. We have no issues with these activities, as we enjoy seeing folks have fun. However, we are concerned that these activities may no longer be allowed here or elsewhere should right-of-ways now be determined to be the streets by the ZBA. If the ZBA agrees with the Jewels that the right-of-way are streets, then it must consider if the regulations would allow the Jewels to put a driveway entrance within 32 feet of an intersection, i.e. where the 14-foot and 16-foot right-of-ways intersect. These points are illustrated in the presentation package attached that has also been provided to the building commissioner. We respectfully request that the ZBA support the building commissioner's decision and vote not to overrule it. Sincerely, Phyllis and Carl Luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, the building commissioner is here, so I would invite him up.
I am the building commissioner zoning officer for the town of Lunenburg. I may be new to Lunenburg, but I'm not new to zoning. I've done zoning interpretation for a few towns. You know, every town has their own particular nuances in zoning, but they all have one thing in common, the zoning bylaws are not easy to interpret. There's a lot of contradictory language from one section to another, which I believe is the case for this particular fence. My original visit, you know, I noticed the height of the fence, which I believe can be easily concluded, the driveway which was done within the last couple of years, the height of the grade was brought up considerably, I would say approximately a foot, to which you can see the deflection where the fence is. You can see the picture with the level that Mr. Luck took. It's clear that, once the grading is done, that the fence will be within a six-foot, give or take a couple inches. I mean, the industry standard for fences is a six-foot fence. And the normal business practice is to keep it a couple inches off the ground so it doesn't rot. No one's going to put a fence in the ground so it rots, and you want animals to be able to get out from underneath it. So, a six-foot fence might be six foot two when you're done, it might be six three. It's going to be within a few inches, which is pretty standard for every community that I've worked in. And as far as the rows being considered streets, I would disagree. I think, as pointed out in his slide, if you look around town, specifically on that exact same row, you will see a very similar fence approximately 100 feet down the street. I think you'll notice that on a lot of those fire roads, they're not town-maintained, they're not town-plowed. I don't think they should be considered streets. If you're going to consider them streets for fences, I think you would have to consider them streets for anything people want to do, for setbacks, for sheds, for any of that kind of stuff. I think you're going to open up a can of worms. I think there's going to be a lot of violations that are currently existing that haven't really been looked after because they weren't considered violations by previous administrations. So I would ask that you take this into consideration for your decision.
Okay. Lisa, do we have anything from the DPW? Did they send anything as regards the streets?
The building official had a conversation with him, and he just.
Would you relate the conversation?
So I spoke with Jack on, I believe it was Monday, or it might have been Tuesday, I'm sorry, I forget what day, but I talked to Jack on the phone. He did tell me that the purpose of the conversation was to see if they're maintained and/or plowed, you know, graded, plowed, anything like that, by the DPW, and he said that they are not, they never have been. And I also spoke to the previous building commissioner, Gary Rhodes, to see his interpretation, to see if he did have the same viewpoint as me, as Mr. Luck had said, and it was true. He said he did look at it the same way. He couldn't recall any exact conversations, but he did have the same viewpoint on that fence that I did, that the road is not considered a street.
Okay, do you agree with, if they had graded first and put the fence in, say they graded a year ago or six months ago, put the fence in yesterday, that it would be in compliance with all the zoning?
I think it would be in compliance with all of zoning. I think they could still argue the row is a street, so it would still be within the 20 feet, but I think it would be hard to argue the height of the fence. But I'd like to also point out that some of the contradictory sections I was pointing out was 250 6.4. If you look at the driveway entrances section, it specifically states that if you have a fence and you have parking alongside the fence, you have to have either a five-foot-tall fence or plantings that will be six feet within three years' time for growth to act as a screening for glare of headlights and noise to abutting neighbors. So, which do you enforce? You have to, you know, like I said, zoning is very gray, it's not black and white, you can't just cherry pick one section and forget everything else that's in the bylaw. I kind of have to use judgment and common sense and convey what I think it says and what it means, what the point of it was, why they wrote it that way.
Any questions from the board members while the commissioner's up here?
I just have a question. So I went down there and took a look at the fence. So, is the fence now seven feet high? I mean, I saw that there was a, you know, a break between the ground and where the fence starts and then goes up. Is that grade, is that going to be graded and then filled in?
So, if you look at the pictures, I can show you now.
It's a little hard to describe, but if you look at the pictures.
I'm going to have to show the audience what we're looking at as well.
I think this, so something like, so I'm talking about this disparity right there between the ground.
So if you look at this picture, it's hard to tell on the picture, it looks kind of level, but the point where the driveway is, if you level it over, as can be seen here, there's approximately a 12-inch difference in height, maybe even more, 14 inches, from the driveway over to the fence. It would make sense that if they were to drop it down and then fill it in, so originally, before the driveway went in, it was one level piece of land.
Okay.
They brought it up roughly a foot for the drainage, whatever, whatever reason, they created somewhat of a bowl on the outside of the fence. Their intention is to bring the whole circle oval area up to where the driveway is now, so once again it's level, even though it won't be at the same level it originally was, the whole thing will be a foot higher.
All right, so that hasn't, that hasn't taken place yet?
It has not.
Okay, okay, all right. The grading hasn't taken place.
So depending on where you measure, if you level over to where the driveway is, I think it would be around six feet, six two, somewhere around there.
Okay.
Whatever.
And I have one more question for the building commissioner, Mr. Chairman. So, I mean, typically, and I don't know what's in the bylaw or not, but typically, when I see a fence and it's abutting the neighbors, the nice side of the fence, this side, is typically facing the abutter, and it looked like this is now facing the applicant or the aggrieved. Is that normal standard practice with fences?
Some towns have language, you have to have the nice side facing your neighbor, some towns don't. I haven't found anything in our bylaws stating that you have to do that.
Okay.
It's up to the discretion of the person installing the fence.
Okay.
It is not in our bylaw that the good side has to. It's not even in our bylaw that I know of that you have to be set back three feet.
Right. It's right on the property line, correct? Like, is this fence right on the property line between?
I'm not exactly sure where the survey is from what he, Mr. Luck's email that was read, it sounds like parts of it are eight feet off the line, parts probably closer.
Okay.
I usually recommend that people keep it two or three feet off the line so they can maintain the fence on their own property.
Sure.
For cases like this where you don't get along with your neighbor, you don't have to go on someone else's property to maintain your fence.
Okay.
But I couldn't answer to exactly where the property line is.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, you had mentioned that it's kind of like a bowl, and I noticed, I did go down there, I did look at the fence the same. On the day I went, it was raining heavily, and the water was pooled, and there was a drain there, you know, on that property. Do you know who installed that drain?
I do not know who installed the drain, but I did talk to the conservation agent, Matt Morrow, regarding this particular fence and property, and he had already looked at it, and he was okay with them filling in that area.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is the water was pooled, so I, you know, if it was graded, it would probably drain, but I didn't know who put the drain in.
Yeah, I don't know that either.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for the commissioner?
Just a question on, in the bylaws, we talk about streets, and it's known as a public or private way, and is your interpretation that the right-of-way is not a private way? Or, I'm just trying to understand that.
My interpretation is that it is not considered a street. I think the, I think the bylaw could use some rewording, I think it's confusing the way it's worded, but I would, I do not consider it a street, for all intents and purposes. It's more akin to a driveway.
And you consider, you don't consider it a street because it's not maintained by the DPW?
It's not maintained by the DPW, it's never been treated as a street. It's not recognized as a street in town maps and what forth. I would akin it more to a common driveway than a street.
Any other questions while you're here?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, what would you deem to be a private way then?
Well, if you look at the definition in our bylaw, I would go by that for what the private way would entail. Any way that is not a public way as defined in this bylaw.
If you look right below it, the.
I would consider it an easement, what we're talking about today. If I were to put a label on it, you could call it a driveway, you could call it a right-of-way, you could call it an easement. For all intents and purposes, I think it's more of an easement.
Any other questions?
I just have one really quick question, and I know that this started with the previous building commissioner, so maybe you don't know the answer to this, but in you going out there, was there anything that, like, I kind of just want to set the table, that they're not like asking for forgiveness, they did everything, went through the right channels and.
Who was they?
The locks, I'm sorry, as far as like.
I don't have anything in writing, but from conversations that I've gathered, he did speak to Gary Rhodes, the previous building commissioner, to see what he would have to do if it would be allowed. Was told that it was allowed.
Okay. So there's no paperwork that wasn't filed that should have been filed?
Not for the fence, there was other things related to that site that I noticed.
Yeah.
If you want me to go into them, I can. It's somewhat related to the case.
That, no, that's, just for us kind of the, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? So you made, you made your decision independent of Gary's.
Correct. I didn't know about Gary's decision until after I had written the determination letter to Mr. Oyer.
Okay. And did, and I don't know if you know this from your conversation from Mr. Rhodes, but did he say that he went to the locks prior to the fence being built and checked it out and said, yes, this is okay?
He couldn't remember specifics, he just remembered talking to him about the fence. I don't, I didn't ask him about if he visited the site or not.
Okay, all right. Thank you. If there's no other questions, we may call you back, but thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Should pass these down?
Yep.
This is from.
I don't know if you guys have all got all of these pictures that were submitted, so I will pass them. This is actually, uh, these are the same. Just to make sure that we all have the same. I've looked at these. I.
These came yesterday. Those were submitted tonight.
Yeah, I printed these out yesterday. Okay, um, I think with that, uh, if the Jules, like, are their representative, would like to, uh, address the question.
So good evening, Mr. Commissioner, the secretary and members of the board. My name is Jess Oyer. I'm an attorney with the law firm Murphian King in Boston, Massachusetts. And I'm here on behalf of Sue and Perry Jewell, who are clearly here with me tonight. I do have prepared remarks, and I believe Sue and Perry each have a statement they'd like to read into the record as well. Prior to that, however, I do want to address some of the issues that were just discussed. With respect to the grading, so if you look at, and I don't know that this is necessarily going to be revealed by the pictures that are available to us right now. But if you look at the driveway and sort of the way that it's set up in relation to both Lux property and the Jewell's property, you have the driveway, which may have increased the grade slightly, but the real increase in grade is the curb that is obviously a temporary increase in grade. And it exists, it exists at about, you know, two feet wide. Then you have the Jewell's property here with the driveway, the Lux property here. The actual level of the driveway and the Lux property over here is essentially the same. So when, when you see the pictures, you're, you're comparing the Jewell's, or the Lux property, rather, with the height of the curb, and obviously there's going to be a difference there. If they were to fill their property to come to the same height as the curb, you're still a significant amount higher than the actual level of the Jewell's driveway. So whether that fills provided or not, it's the, the net effect is the same for the Jewell's because they're still facing an obstruction, a fence which is seven feet above their property and seven feet above the existing property level of the Lux, of that parcel of the Lux. So I don't think it's right, I don't think it's in keeping with the spirit of the bylaw, which requires fences to be no higher than six feet, to allow them to fill that to reach the same height as the curb, which essentially poses a seven-foot obstruction for the Jewell's. I'll get into that a little bit further, um, but that's what I wanted to say about that initially. You mentioned a, a drain that you saw on that, on that small portion of land as well. That drain has been there for years because water has always pooled in that triangular portion of land. The pooling of water was not caused by this new construction of the driveway. And in the settlement agreement that was reached in a previous lawsuit, each party had a responsibility. The Jewell's were to pave their driveway. The Lux were to deal with stormwater mitigation. I believe that drain has not been modified in any way for years, but it is still incumbent upon them to deal with stormwater mitigation pursuant to a previous settlement agreement. That has nothing to do with what's in front of the board today. The board is, is simply being presented, I'm simply presenting that information so that you have some background. But again, the driveway did not cause that water to pool. If anything, the driveway was actually sloped and the curb was created to keep runoff from reaching the Lux driveway and keep it on, from reaching the Lux property, rather, and keeping it on the Jewell's driveway. Uh, the last thing I'll mention with respect to the remarks that were previously made is that I don't think it's, it's fair or frankly accurate or right to base the definition of street on some sort of common sense notion of street. I think the definition of, definition of street has to be grounded in the bylaws themselves. And based on the submission that I've made to the board and additional comments that I'll make in a moment, the definition, the definition of street does encompass those two rights-of-way at issue here, the 16-foot right-of-way and the 14-foot right-of-way. And I'll get into why in a moment. So I do want to, want to present some prepared remarks. Generally, I don't like to read remarks, but there are a lot of statute, there's a lot of statutory language I want to be able to convey to the board, so I am going to read most of this. So by way of background, the Lux erected the stockade fence on or about October 8th. Thereafter, on October 10th, Commissioner Burlingame did visit the property and inspect the fence. That same day, the commissioner issued his written opinion that the stockade fence did not violate zoning bylaws and no enforcement action would be required. It is this non-enforcement decision that the Jewell's are appealing. I plan to review and summarize the bases for the Jewell's appeal, which are predicated on the specific language of the bylaw and on historical information that I don't believe was readily available to or known to Mr. Burlingame at the time. And what I refer to are some of the plans of land from the 40s and some of the deeds from the 40s that actually reference certain things that are relevant to whether these are considered streets. So I'm not looking at Mr. Burlingame's opinion and saying, this on its face is wrong. I'm saying this did not, this opinion did not have the benefit of the full information that it should have had to make a proper decision here. And that's, the information is now being presented to the board so that the board can make the proper decision. So one thing I wanted to get, get into as well, before I get into the details of the grounds of the appeal, stress that this is a very unique situation. I imagine it's exceedingly rare to have a resident of Lunenburg that has a driveway which runs almost parallel to the approaching roadway and which is separated from that roadway by a sliver of land that belongs to a neighbor. And even more rare, where that sliver of land has been, where that neighbor has erected on that sliver of land a fence that provides no privacy to any existing home, doesn't, it doesn't encircle any home. The only thing that it does is blockade the Jewell's home from their view of the approaching roadway. It is this situation, in this situation, again, the only residence that is affected by the fence is the Jewell's. That is in essence the uniqueness of the situation. Generally, when a fence is built, it is built to provide privacy to a home. This, this fence provides no privacy to any home. All that this fence actually accomplishes is to obstruct the Jewell's vision and create a safety hazard. And this situation is not one will repeat, not one which will repeat itself often forever in the town of Lunenburg. So I would urge the board not to be persuaded by the sort of slippery slope argument that if you were to, if you were to make a decision in the Jewell's favor, Lord only knows what other things are going to come your way, because this is a very unique situation. Now, each of the two issues that I just mentioned, of visibility and safety, are essential to each of the grounds of, for appeals set forth in the Jewell's appeals papers. It is because the stockade fence obstructs vision and creates a safety hazard that we are here tonight. As stated in the, in the appeals package you have before you, there are four bases for the Jewell's appeal, and I will review each of them briefly. First, the fence does fall within the scope of Section 250 6.601. And pursuant to that section, the stockade fence should be reduced to no more than 36 inches. Section 250 6.601 provides in pertinent part, no fence which obstructs vision shall exceed 36 inches in height within 20 feet of the street line. So that raises two questions that we have to answer. Does the fence obstruct vision? And is the fence within 20 feet of a street line? I set forth in the papers, the answer to both of these questions is yes. First, with respect to the obstruction of vision, I'd like to direct your attention to a few of the photos submitted to the board in the original appeals package. These are at exhibit five. Now, if you look at the first two photos in exhibit five, you'll see Perry Jewell measuring the height of the fence, which exceeds seven feet. I think we can all agree, no one standing behind a seven-foot fence is going to see anything on the other side of it. And again, I'll relate the fact that the, when I say seven feet, it's not only in relation to the existing ground level on which the fence sits, it's in relation to the Jewell driveway. The Jewell's front yard consists of only a few feet between their front door and the fence. And if they are standing anywhere in that area, they can see nothing beyond the fence. The next two photos, photos number three and four at exhibit number five, show the fence from the perspective of the rights-of-way. As you can see, only the roof of the Jewell's home and a few feet of the top of the siding are visible from the rights-of-way. Almost the entire house, driveway, and the front yard are otherwise completely obstructed by the fence. The fifth and sixth photos may clear that any vehicles in the driveway are likewise obstructed from the vantage of the street. And similarly, no one sitting in those vehicles would be able to see the adjacent roadways. Lastly, there's an additional picture in the separate package that Sue Jewell provided a couple of days ago. And it shows the vantage point from the Jewell's living room. From that vantage, you can see that the view of the, the oncoming roadway is completely obstructed and the view from outside the window is essentially 50% obstructed by the fence itself as well. I think we can all agree that to a very significant degree, this fence obstructs vision. Moving on to the next portion of the inquiry, the Jewell's paper set forth several interpretations of the zoning bylaw, which lead to the conclusion that the two rights-of-way at issue, the 14-foot right-of-way and the 16-foot right-of-way, both constitute streets under the bylaw. And therefore, the fence is with, and because the fence is within 20 feet of the street line, it should be reduced to 36 inches. Now, I want to focus on only one of those interpretations that's presented, and it's in the first part of exhibit one. And in my opinion, and frankly, I don't see really any way around it, this is conclusive and inescapable in terms of its conclusion that these rows must be considered streets. First, street line, which is the operative term within Section 250 6.601, is defined synonymously with exterior line, which in turn is defined in pertinent part simply as the dividing line between a street and a lot. Street in the bylaw is then defined in pertinent part as a public way or private way in existence when the provisions of the subdivision control law became effective in the town of Lunenburg. If we then look to the definition of private way, it is any way that is not a public way as defined by this bylaw. If we also look to the definition of right-of-way, it is a way serving property, a, a way serving property other than that on which it is located. So if a right-of-way is simply a way, and a private way is any way that is not a public way, then obviously a right-of-way falls within the definition of a private way. And according to the definition of street, street includes a public or private way in existence when the provisions of the subdivision control law became effective in the town of Lunenburg. So now there's two more questions we have to ask ourselves. When were these ways established? And when was the subdivision control law adopted by the town of Lunenburg? We have multiple facts that establish that the rights-of-way were in fact in existence prior to the town's adoption of the subdivision control law, which for the purposes of the bylaw qualifies these rights-of-way as streets. First, we have a May 29th, 2002 plan of land at exhibit eight in the Jewell's appeals papers. The purpose of this May 29th, 2002 plan of land was to subdivide what are now 20 and 22 Sunset Lane from it, from the original single lot that they comprised. On that plan of land, which is signed by each of the then-serving five members of the planning board, it states very clearly at note five, "This plan is being subdivided under Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 41, Section 81L exemption, quote, 'the division of attractive land on which two or more buildings were standing when the subdivision control law went into effect in the city or town in which the land lies.'" Therefore, we know that the residences at 20 and 22 Sunset, which are accessed only by the 14 and 16-foot rights-of-way, were constructed prior to the town's adoption of the subdivision control law. We have to conclude then that the rights-of-way were also in existence prior to the town's adoption of the subdivision control law, as they have always been the only means of accessing these two properties. And if that were not enough, we have even more conclusive evidence in the 1947 Reardon Plan, which is exhibit nine to the Jewell's appeals papers, which clearly shows all of the residents at issue here. Lot A is Sun, is 30 Sunset, Lot B is 20 and 22 Sunset. And that plan clearly shows both the 16-foot and 14-foot rights-of-way. Therefore, we know conclusively that those rights-of-way were in existence at least as early as 1947. Further, John Reardon sold those properties in 1947. And in the deeds to each of Lot A and Lot B, written references made to both the 14-foot right-of-way and the 16-foot right-of-way. Lastly, the Massachusetts subdivision control law was not adopted on a statewide basis until 1953. Therefore, we know that Lunenburg could not possibly have adopted it prior to that date. So we now have established several things conclusively. The rights-of-way existed at least as early as 1947. The subdivision control law was not a lack, could not have been enacted any earlier than 1953. And therefore, the rights-of-way, for the purposes of Section 250 6.601 of the bylaw, must be streets. This conclusion is an inescapable result of the language of the bylaw. Because the rights-of-way are streets, and because the fence obstructs vision and sits well within 20 feet of those rights-of-way, the fence cannot be any higher than 36 inches. The second point and the second argument is that under Section 250 6.601, there's a separate provision unrelated to the issue just discussed that specifies that no boundary fence can be higher than six feet. This is the issue that was, that was addressed in more detail by Mr. Burlingame. Here again, I would direct you to the first photos in exhibit five, which clearly show that the fence, as it currently stands, is in excess of seven feet. Now, despite the fact that Mr. Luck intends to raise the grade on his side of the property, I don't think that's in keeping with the spirit or the purpose of the bylaw. If you're able to build a fence at any height and then, and then change the land underneath it to bring it into compliance with the zoning bylaw, what's to stop someone from building an eight-foot fence, a 10-foot fence, and then grading their property to their, to however high they want to grade it, when that grade might be significantly different than the abutting neighbor's property? And therefore, the ultimate effect is still a 10-foot, 8-foot obstruction. Here, a 7-foot plus obstruction. So I don't think that's in keeping with the bylaw at all to allow that process to occur. And again, I've already described the situation between the two properties where the real change in grading is the curb. Otherwise, the, the land on the Lux side of the fence and the land on the Jewell's side of the fence are relatively even in terms of their level. Therefore, the 7-foot fence still creates a 7-foot obstruction, even if that grading is changed, for, from the perspective of the Jewell's property. At a minimum, therefore, ultimately changing the, the level of the ground is an inappropriate way to get around the limitations set forth in 250 6.601, and it violates both the spirit and intent of the bylaw. At a minimum, the fence should be no higher than six feet from the existing ground level. Third, the purpose of the bylaw under Section 250 1.1 includes conserving health, securing safety from fire, flood, panic, and other dangers, and conserving the value of land and buildings. All of these goals and purposes of the bylaw would be served by properly enforcing Section 6, 250 6.601 and requiring the fence be reduced to no higher than six, than 36 inches, sorry. As I have already made clear through reference to various photographs that have been submitted to the board, the fence does obstruct vision and it does create a safety hazard. With respect to safety, this is true for multiple reasons. From the perspective of the Jewell's home, they cannot see oncoming, the oncoming roadway, nor much of anything other than the fence. From the perspective of the Jewell's driveway, particularly while seated in vehicles, the Jewell's cannot see anything past the fence. That includes both vehicular and pedestrian traffic along those rights-of-way. From the perspective of the roadways, neither pedestrians nor vehicles can see anything in the Jewell's driveway, any cars about to exit, any people about to exit. And this again creates a danger of accidents, accidents occurring at those locations. This is a tight neighborhood with not a lot of space between the homes and the access ways that serve those homes. And an obstruction of vision of this magnitude is simply unacceptable and creates too significant a safety hazard to be allowed. With respect to conservation of value, the Jewell's curb appeal has been destroyed by this fence. And there's been a diminution in value caused by the eyesore and safety hazard that it prevents, that it presents. All this fence accomplishes, again, is to obstruct the Jewell's vision, to take away the Jewell's curb appeal, and create a safety hazard for the Jewell's and for others traveling along those rights-of-way. The fence is entirely antithetical to the purpose of the zoning bylaw. Therefore, even despite any specific provisions violated by the fence, specifically 250 6.601, the simple fact that the fence runs afoul of the spirit and purpose of the bylaw is enough for this board to step in and require that it be abated. Fourth and finally, it would be arbitrary and capricious to afford those residents of Sunset Lane with Sunset Lane addresses who also have frontage on Sunset Lane with protections against obstructive fences, but to deny those same protections to residents with Sunset Lane addresses who lack Sunset Lane frontage. As the Jewell's describe in their appeals papers, each Lunenburg resident with a Sunset Lane address was assessed a betterment assessment of $13,621 enter about 1991, in association with the town's designation of Sunset Lane as a public way. The town's designation of one access way, here Sunset Lane, as a public way, affords residents with frontage along that way protection from obstructive fences which might cause safety hazards. But if the non-enforcement decision stands, then that same designation simultaneously deprives certain other residents, like the Jewell's, who despite having Sunset Lane addresses, access their residences using longstanding private ways leading away from Sunset Lane from those same protections from obstructive fences. Simply put, if the fence cannot be erected in front of a neighbor's house abutting Sunset Lane, it is arbitrary and capricious to allow it to be erected in front of the Jewell's house which abuts, which abuts two private ways which have serviced residents of Lunenburg since 1947. In conclusion, I want to return to the idea that this is a unique situation. Again, the arrangement of the properties is not one that will be repeated often, if ever, in Lunenburg. As such, the board should not be concerned with other fences in Lunenburg or other properties about which questions could theoretically arise. about which questions could theoretically arise as a result of the board's decision here tonight. Additionally, I want to point out that the other fence to which the Lux are pointing, which is the fence which surrounds the actual residents at 30 Sunset Lane, is entirely irrelevant to the present issue. First, even if it were in violation of the same bylaws we're discussing, only the owners of that home that it affects would have standing to challenge it as being in violation of the bylaws. Therefore, for the Lux to point at that fence and say, hey, look, nobody challenged this fence, so why are we making a big deal of the other fence? Is meaningless, because the only people who are standing to challenge that other fence is the Lux. Of course, they're not going to challenge it because it's theirs. They put it up. Furthermore, Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40A, Section 7, has two Sunset provisions. Relevant here, one Sunset provision prohibits any enforcement action 10 years after a non-conforming structure has been built. This is another reason why there's no broader issue, there's no broader concern that this is going to lead to an influx of, of enforcement actions, because all of the residences in this small neighborhood were built decades ago. There's no enforcement act, no enforcement action can be brought against any of those residences. Furthermore, they would be considered pre-existing non-conforming structures. And any addition that was made to them, any shed that may have been put outside them would be considered the modification of a pre-existing non-conforming structure and would therefore be permitted likely under the zoning bylaws. Therefore, there is no, again, there's no broader policy concern implicated by this issue that's before the board here tonight. The board has only one question before tonight. Does the stockade fence, which is situated very uniquely and which obstructs the Jewels' vision and causes a safety hazard, run afoul of the zoning bylaws of the town of Lunenburg? I sincerely hope, and I urge the board to take into consideration the information provided, provided here tonight, including the very detailed information about the historical deeds and documents which qualify these rights-of-way as streets, and answer that question in the affirmative, and require the fence to be reduced in height to no more than 36 inches. Those are my remarks. I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I know that Sue and Perry have some brief, very brief statements they'd like to make as well.
Okay.
I, I apologize. I have to, I, Mr. Chair.
It is 8:30. As we said at the beginning of the hearing, that if it got to be 8:30, he does have to go to the airport. I apologize for that, but again, it is what it is. And so, I think that what we're going to have to do is continue this to a date and time certain.
Alternatively, if the board prefers, and no one else has any comments, there's no public comments, Sue and Perry could submit written versions of their-
I, I still have to leave, and then you need four members, right?
Okay.
Yeah. I apologize.
No, understood.
You need the four to have a call.
Okay.
He leaves, we don't have it.
Understood.
So, we have to, we have to continue.
Okay.
Do we have a date and time certain? That, usually, you're the one that has an issue, so I'm going to ask you for a date and time certain that you know.
What would be the next meeting?
January 8th. Well, the next meeting would be Christmas and when I'm doing this.
We're not going to meet on Christmas.
January 8th, we have a hearing at 7:00. I have a feeling that would go probably an hour.
You do?
It's a dog kennel.
Hmm.
It's a dog kennel.
Okay, 8th, I'm, I'm okay, yes.
You're good with the 8th?
I come back to 7th, so, yes.
Okay. Is that, is that, uh-
Acceptable.
Acceptable, January 8th at 8:00?
Yeah, it works for me.
I guess, yeah, it'll have to be.
Okay. Yeah, we, we can change it to a different date if it doesn't work for somebody, but that's, that's our next hearing date.
Thank you. And thank you all for your time tonight.
That work for, for everybody? Yeah. Get, okay. All right, then this hearing is going to be continued to January 8th at 8 o'clock. Yes, we have a, a 7 o'clock hearing that we think will go about an hour. Okay. Thank you all for coming out, and again, I apologize for having to continue. If that's longer, what we would do is we would, we would, we would actually just announce yours, but we would continue with the hearing that we were on. Normally, it wouldn't run too much longer than an hour.
Usually, we like to finish.
Okay, so basically, you just try to finish that.
Well, finish that, yes, yes, and then we'll go into yours, but- but we, we don't think it's going to go more than an hour. So, we think 8, we're safe.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night. Um, can I have a, uh, a motion to a-
Motion to a chair.
Oh, you know what? I'm going to ask right now, since nobody's left, if there's any public comment, which there is none. So, what I'm going to do is I'm actually going to cut off public discussion. And with that, I'll ask for a motion.
A motion to a chair. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.